All right, it's 10 o'clock. Is Brandon guys open?
Yes.
This morning supervisor Chad coffee gonna leave some work for us.
Lord, we coming to you this morning, Lord, as we conduct county business, Lord, that we'll do it in a manner that's pleasing to you, Lord. Lord, I pray for the ones that's sick, Lord, and fighting this COVID, Lord. Lord, I pray for the families that was lost loved ones this weekend, Lord, that you'll put your hand on them and heal them in the best way you can, Lord. I pray for, Lord, for our first responders, Lord, and sheriff's department in this country, Lord, be with us as we go through this day to do better for you, Lord. In your name I pray. Amen.
Before we get started this morning on the agenda, you sent sharing the Christmas boxes we passed out Wednesday, the 22nd?
Yep, Mr. Bookers.
Okay.
As far as I know, it's same routine as every year.
Number one on the agenda, Mr. Jim Curry. Number two, Ms. Patty Young.
My whole agenda to be here today is that I know that the Board of Supervisors is responsible for Justice Court and the things that are happening over there of where these summons and stuff are not getting served in a timely manner. I just want to run down the agenda of what happened to me, that has cost us quite a bit of money and it also cost us quite a bit of time because the summons was not served. And I had to call several times to get it served and ended up going to Mr. Jimmy Edwards, the sheriff, to get one of his deputies to serve. And I'm telling you, we've got the best sheriff in anywhere in North Mississippi because he didn't hesitate to go get it and serve it. I no longer live here in Union County, but we have five houses here and we pay close to $10,000, it's a little over $9,000 a year in property taxes. And we have commercial property here, we still participate in Union County. So we pay our tax dollars here, you know, every year, just like we're doing in two other counties. But anyway, I had a house on Montseal Drive and the lady, the first of October, she paid $200 on her rent and she told me to come back on the 8th. And when I went back on the 8th, it was on Friday, she said she didn't know when she'd have it, but her bank card had been stolen and she'd have to go to the bank on Monday. So on Monday, on Friday, that Friday, she called the COVID enforcer and told him that we would not do any work on the house, which the house had been totally inspected before she moved in. She had sprayed spray foam all in windows. I had put a $300 dehumidifier in the house because it did sweat some. But anyway, that's beside the point. Joey Watson continued the house that had been kept up. But anyway, so anyway, she started complaining to him that there was stuff needed to be done and he went in and called me and said, those windows have got to be all that stuff taken, all that phone taken out, so they will raise, because you have to have a window that will raise. So anyway, I just, she had not paid off her rent, so I gave her an eviction notice on the 11th. So I had to give her a seven-day notice because that's what our lease and our contract says. It's a month to month. So when I came, I dated her that on Monday, the 11th of October. Okay. So on Monday, October the 18th, I went over and filed for an eviction because she wasn't out. The court date was set for November the 2nd, which I was told later that you have to give them a seven-day notice of summons, to summons them to court, but with the new law that they have, you give them a, we give them actually, the landlord gives them seven days. When you go to court, the judge gives them three days and after that, they can be removed. So I had given them a seven-day notice. I went over on the 18th of October and filed for the eviction. The court date was set for November the 2nd. On Wednesday, the 27th, it had not been served. And Mr. Doyle told me that it didn't matter if he went and got it that day or whenever, that we couldn't get in court on the 2nd because she had to have seven days, which that's not true. She had to have five days notice. So he said, if it'll make you happy, I'll go get it and serve it today. I said, well, it won't make me happy because I should have been in there on November the 2nd. Now I had to wait till November the 16th to get in court. So according to his rules, but I should have been, you know, in because he had five days. Actually, it was six days and he got down to serve. Okay, on November the 16th, I got in court and Judge Garrison said they got till Friday to get out. They got three days to get out. Okay? So Mr. Doyle said he would go by and tell them they had three days to get out. I don't know if he did or not. On Monday, November the 22nd, well, actually, I sent her a text and told her, but I told her if she didn't have a place to go, that I would rent a storage building and pay it for one month and have the men at work for me move her stuff and put it in the storage building. She never answered. So Monday, November the 22nd, I went back down to get rid of eviction. Well, Ms. Edwards was there by herself and they were trying to have court that day, or it was, I guess it was a special court, I don't know, but she was trying to run the office by herself. And I told her I'd just come back the next day because she was just too busy to do all this. So I came back the 23rd and paid the money, 60 more dollars. I had paid 75 before and I paid 60 more dollars to get a rid of eviction. And the judge had to sign it. That was the week of Thanksgiving. The judges were out all week long. So that threw me into another week, which I understand that, but really, there should be somebody there at all times that can sign a warrant or whatever people need, especially after you've paid your money. So Wednesday, uh, Wednesday, let's see, not Wednesday, okay, that was November, okay. So I went back, when I went back on Monday, it was December, let's see, after the week of Thanksgiving.
November 29th.
Yes, it was November the 29th. I went back on that, let's see. Let's see, now, this was, okay, on the 16th, okay, the 23rd, I couldn't get my rid of eviction. On the, on Monday, the 29th, I went back and I got the rid of eviction. Okay, I called Mr. Doyle and told him I had the rid of eviction. He told me, he said, I cannot serve it till Wednesday. Okay, it's right here in town on Montseal Drive. He said, I cannot serve it till Wednesday. I'll meet you there at 8:00. I said, I have other plans for Wednesday and Thursday. I cannot be there. They need to leave today. He said, well, she said she's gonna be out by Thursday. I said, no, she's not. I've got a rid of eviction and I need it served today. And he, he said, no ma'am, I will not be there till Wednesday morning and hung up on me. Then he started texting me saying that, he knew I was frustrated and by then, I wasn't frustrated, I was mad as ever. And I said, he said, I told you I'll be there Wednesday morning and serve that. And I said, no, you won't because I'm gonna get somebody else. So I went over to Sheriff Jimmy Edwards' office and he said, I gave him the information and stuff and he said, is it over there in the box? And I said, yes. And he said, I'll go get it and I'll be over there in 20 minutes. I'll have somebody over there in 20 minutes. So by the time we got there, they were gone again. I don't know if somebody called them and told them we were coming or what, but they were gone. So it took Mr. Swords, Chris Swords, took him nearly all day to end up catching them. It was close to 4:00 in the afternoon and that was on Monday. He called them and he served them. And he called me and said, he told them they had till the end of that day to get out. And I told him that was okay. So I said, I'll be back in the morning. So the next morning, we got back and I called them and the sheriff's department sent three people out there, three men. And we gave them one hour to finish up. They had moved a lot of stuff and so they, they did their job. They got her, they got them out of there. Plus, they had to end up arresting her because she came up screaming and fussing and hearing on so. And she, she told them, y'all might as well carry me to jail, da 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 da, I'm gonna do all this and that. So they did, they carried her to jail and then found her car. So I'm just saying, the sheriff's department had to do what the constable should have done. And, you know, it's happening all the time over there because I went to court and the day that I was in court, there were seven other women in that courtroom and over half of their, they were with finance companies and different companies here in town trying to collect their money. And over half of their summons had not been served. So I think that there's a problem over there that the supervisors need, if nothing else, go sit in the courtroom and see how they get served and how they don't. But I think that we're taxpayers here and this has cost us over $2,000 now because she stole the dehumidifier, which was $300. But anyway, it has cost us that much and, you know, I'm trying to get the house ready to rent. So I just, I think the board needs to take some action and go there. And if Mr. Doyle, if his first priority is not his elected job, which is, he was elected as a constable, if that, if he is not committed to that job, he needs to resign. I know he has a second job or he used to, he used to work for the police department. I don't know if he still does or not. But when they're elected by the people, then they need to serve the people first and then let that be their second job. But I want to thank y'all for listening to me and I want to thank the sheriff's department because when, anytime that here in New Albany, I have ever needed anything, they've always been there and helped us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just say for our prayers, I mean, you know, constables are elected, Justice Court judges are elected. We don't have any day-to-day supervisors all over the Justice Court. We simply provide the money for the Justice Court to be able to function, but those were issues that the elected officials. We appreciate this, y'all.
But do you not furnish him a car? Taxpayers?
I don't think so.
No.
But y'all are over the Justice Court.
Not over the Justice Court. We provide the money for the Justice Court.
Exactly.
Right. But they're elected officials.
Yeah, I know that. Well, then, can I ask you another question? Then who do I need to go and file complaint against? I mean, who do I need to go and file complaint with? Who is over the elected officials?
No, they're elected. It's a voter issue.
They'll be reelected in '23.
That'll be good.
We all had to beg for you.
I mean, I understand what you're saying. If he's elected, I mean, and he wants to keep his position, he needs to, all of us, not just him, all of us.
But who pays the women that works in the Justice Court? Does the county pay them?
They pay the county.
And do y'all pay, who pays the constable?
Well, they have a portion that's based on what they, what they serve.
Fee pay.
Yeah. Yeah, you know.
Their fee pay.
Is all of it fee pay?
Yes.
Okay.
They don't serve paper and they don't get paid.
That's right.
Now, does it go for your time?
Yeah.
You don't sound like you're doing your job like you need to be doing.
No, that's right. And it's costing the taxpayers here in this county.
And I said, not a lot we can do ourselves, but, you know, he is elected, so if he's not doing his job, nobody's completely need to know that.
Exactly, and they will, when he runs again, so.
Do they have a timeline or do they have to serve the papers or?
I really don't know. Terry might know if I'm gonna have to serve something, but I'm not sure. Different ways.
This is a common thing throughout Justice Courts. I mean, it's very frustrating sometimes, you know, in Circuit Court, you hire a process surfer and so, you know, you're paying some, I'm paying somebody, they're gonna go serve, make you serve them. That's right. Justice Court, and you know, most of the constables are, it's a part-time job.
I would think you couldn't do it full-time.
No, most of them, it is their part-time job and it's just sort of the, it's the system we live in. Frustrating sometimes.
We increase the system, it's a system.
Yeah.
It's time to sip and handle.
Number three, approval consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion to CJ. Circuit of Randy Allen fiber. Motion, Terry.
There were 15, by the way, medical and sanitary.
Listen.
15 down, about 15 up.
Okay. I love to take some.
Yeah, I remember each had two shoes. So another word. Take care. Don't get them out. Thank you.
My syrup.
I'm trying to be careful about it.
Get them out on.
Oh, great. Get your teeth. You break the solid. I'll get it later. I just want to get the solid back for you.
Did you have the solid?
I'll get it later.
This is why I'm saying my type.
I'll get it later.
I'm looking at this. Thank you.
Yes. Help for long time. Thank you.
We have a minute? Nothing going on.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Don't miss it.
Y'all take care.
Any trouble? Discussion of extending the COVID-19 employee policies. Out here, a few months ago, we renewed it. Goes out in December. We're going to renew this amended policy. What's the date on that?
The date of? December 31st, I mean, 12/31.
I made a motion.
A year?
One year.
Those are years.
For a year, I made a motion, change that. So, all right, for one year.
I mean, to extend it, not renew it. Let me just.
For one year.
You made the motion?
Motion of Randy, Circuit of Randy Allen fiber. Motion, Terry. Discussion of term bids opened on December the 1st.
Shall we have that open?
Yes, shall we have it? Shall we have it?
Yes, but I have not been open yet.
We're not open to that.
Leading what was on the agenda. We just got one day of Congress to begin with. So.
I thought it got opened. I thought when he brought it up. Terry put it on the agenda. That's why I'm with them. It's okay. Because that's why, okay, that's good.
On there, we ready?
Yeah, waiting on you. Like usually. Like you. Don't wear that last.
All right, we've got a bid from WG Construction Company in Ripley for hot mix laid in place, county furnishing mix and delivering, $55 per ton. And then we've got hot mix delivered and laid in place with, this is 12.5 mm ST mix with county furnishing the mix, not delivering, that's $75 per ton. That's right, but we have to furnish the mix and deliver. $75 a ton if they deliver.
They're gonna charge 75 just to put it down?
No, 75, it's a haul and they don't put it down.
I agree with that.
Oh, put it down.
That's right. Well, we need to find some asphalt.
Yeah, we need to work.
We ain't working.
Yeah.
That might be in the next envelope.
Yeah, so.
That's what we got.
I don't know, we'll find out.
That's all they're putting out on the town hall.
Yeah. All right, next one's from coal mix. They bid on item three, item four, and item five. So C M N P, the liquid emulsion for production of stockpile coal mix that will remain pliable for a minimum of six months at $3.75 per gallon delivered to any facility within the county. Then item four is home site production of coal mix asphalt in various locations throughout Union County. It's $4.15 per gallon. There's a note that says for each project, coal mix will provide the emulsion, plug mill and labor with the county to furnish limestone rock and loaders. And then item five is coal mix asphalt limestone at $94 per ton, FOB at plant and rent. Any questions? Here's a bid from Ergon. All of these prices are delivered in full truck transport quantities to any destination in Union County. CRS-2, $170 per gallon. Dollar 50 a gallon. I'm sorry, dollar 70 per gallon. CRS-2P, $1.90 per gallon. Fox Seal, $2.53 per gallon. Prices are adjusted monthly based on the previous month's index, so that was based on November.
What'd you say, Fox Seal?
Uh, $2.53 per gallon. Ergon allows two hours of loading time. After that, they charge 85 hours, $85 an hour. Federal environmental fee will be added to the above prices at a very minimal rate of .0015. So not much. All right, the next bid is from Blue Water Industries. This is for crushed limestone. Number one, for number one, $15.70. For number four, $15.70. For number 56, $15.70. For number six, it says number 56, but that might be number five. Oh, it is number six? Okay.
It's five and six mixed.
Okay. Number six is $15.70. Number seven is $16.70. Number 89 is $16.70. And crusher run is $13. Our next bid is from Vulcan. All right, so they've got, this appears to be all limestone and they've got dense grade base is FOB plant, $13. Number four, $14 per ton, and this is all FOB plant per unit. Number five, six, is $14. Number six is $14.50. Number seven is $15.25. Number 89 is $15.25. Number two, unwashed, is $14. And every one of those was a Cherokee limestone. This one here is a Pride limestone. It is 89.15, $15.25. And then another Pride limestone, number one, is $14.
There was one of those we didn't advertise for, I think it was number two. I know we didn't advertise for them. It was shitting all the time. Number two, we did. You can't set a bid on something you didn't advertise for.
All right, here's a bid on liquid asphalt from Hunt Refining Company. This quote is based on a minimum load of 24 tons or legal weight limit. It's for anywhere in Union County. It does not include accessory charges incurred due to detention of period equipment in excess of the first three hours. So the first three hours are free. $80 per hour is billed at half-hour increments afterwards. There's return freight and pump-off charges too. So the quote is CRS-2, $2.16 per gallon. CRS-2P, $2.41 per gallon. Fox Seal, $2.25 per gallon. And it says that the prices in this bid will be tied to MDOT emulsified asphalt index and will fluctuate up or down monthly with the changes in index. and will fluctuate up or down monthly with the changes in index. If approved for return with credit, the following index prices will be in effect. C R S dash two, one dollar and ninety-one cents per gallon. C R S dash two P, two dollars and sixteen cents per gallon. The return freight and disposal charge is half of the original actual haul rate. Fog seal is non-returnable to the Tuscaloosa refinery. Approved credits will be two dollars a gallon. Lot of information in that one. Okay, the next one is a liquid asphalt bid from Ergon.
It's the same, there's two bids, but they were signed. She mailed one and then sent one central bidding because she was a fighter.
Okay, so it's the same one?
Yeah.
Yes, same one. All right, then we've got a hot mix asphalt supply bid from A PAC. Man, will you investigate whoever's pocket knife in here? Yeah, that I used to open these letters with for all those years. This finger doesn't work quite as good as pocket knife.
I'll warn you, pocket knife, yeah.
That's right. All right, so this is uh from A PAC. And you've got the hot mix, twelve point five M M S T mix. F O B at New Albany Plant or Auburn Road. The price per ton is seventy-eight dollars. Then you got um coal mix by the ton loaded on Union County trucks at manufacturer's plant in on Auburn Road, that's a hundred and ten dollars per ton. All right.
Discussion of bids on duck trucks. Make a motion to take it under advisement. Motion by CJ, second by Chad, to take it under advisement. All in favor? Motion carry. Discussion donating the old forestry truck. Previously donated to the county by the city. Back to the city. Do you have any volunteer fire department?
You got a copy of that?
That truck was coming with one of the forestry trucks in Engle Mar, hang it. Engle Mar donated to the city. So we just need to do a transfer from here to the city.
Okay, so it's donated to the city.
I make a motion.
Motion to Sam.
When did I get Sam?
That's on the deal we discussed a couple weeks ago about the air force and all that stuff.
All right, motion by Chad, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry. Discussion of requests from AB manufacturing to exercise their option and purchase of their facility on Den Mill Road by paying off the lease.
Steve, they they got three more payments on that, two thousand dollars each, so. Make a motion. Second.
Three payments of two thousand dollars.
About six thousand dollars.
All right, motion by Chad, who made the second? Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of updated travel and meal reimbursement rates.
Make a motion.
Motion to CJ?
Second.
Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of budget amendment for Martin Town North Industrial Park project by increasing contractual services for Martin Town North Utilities and decreasing capital outlay. Motion by Sam?
Second.
Second by CJ? All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of budget amendment for inmate commensary by increasing contractual services and consumable supplies and decreasing working cash.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chad?
Second.
Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of Chancellor Clerk payment for services as county attorney.
Take it under advisement. She gonna growl again.
We'll get a second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Chad, second by Sam, is that to approve or take it under advisement? All right. All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of application for Southeast Volunteer Fire Department with the rural fire truck acquisition assistance program. That's the ninety thousand dollar grant for the fire trucks.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Randy, second by Chad, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of easement County Road one sixty-one and one sixty-two on work from damage from road water. This is in my district. I've got easement sign. You know, it's on the backside of the ditch, and I do believe it is from road water. Damage to this man's property.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Randy, second by Chad, all in favor? Motion carry. Thank you. Approval for new program, SAP seventy-three seven E M.
All right, this is a new program based on what we talked about. This is for three roads that we're going to overlay. County Road sixty-nine, two oh nine, and two sixty-nine, like Sam Barkley. This will be new funds to set up program funds for those three roads for this project. These are roads we pulled out of the old job, and now we're just gonna do the overlay.
How second?
Motion by Sam, second by CJ. All in favor? Motion carry. Motion, uh Sam made the motion, CJ seconded, Randy was asleep.
Sounds about right.
Taking it there.
Approval of rewrite revising program SAP seventy-three nine is.
It should be eight S, but.
Should be what?
Could be eight S, but.
Eight S?
I may have talked it in eight. This was the original program for the eleven roads that we uh pulled roads out, killed tons, and three we pulled out and put into that program. The remaining roads will be all right, four roads on eight S now for this revision. Be uh County Road eighty-six, County Road one oh seven, County Road one eighty, County Road one fifty. So this is just. I'll make a motion for that.
Motion by Chad, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of board order amendment to order SAP seventy-three eight.
Motion to approve?
Second, motion by Randy, second by Sam, all in favor? Motion carry.
Jimmy, go ahead and get each one done.
Tony Mas. I think I got a good sign though.
So does everybody. Everybody's got a sign.
Approval of letter of resignation of a deputy clerk collector.
Um Tony Mas was deputy tax collector and she, this is her letter of resignation. Please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from my position as deputy tax collector. My last day of employment will be twelve thirty twenty twenty-one. She received an offer as administrative assistant in the city of Tupelo. So she moved to do that.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Randy, second by CJ, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of November surrendered tag list.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chad, second by Sam, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of petition of reduction of assessment.
Uh we've done these before. These are where um in the tax office, we may find clerical errors on taxes that we've done for taxpayers, and these were on personal property. And um it just reduces that because of clerical error that we had.
Motion by Randy?
Second.
Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion carry.
We look at mine timer and see if it might be a clerical error.
Does CJ design it?
So increase instead of reduction.
Problem.
Approval of Lexington Commissioner Clay Follers.
I make a motion.
Motion by CJ, second by Sam, all in favor? Approval of Circuit Clerk payment for services as registrar.
Make a motion.
Sure.
She's not in here.
Motion by Sam, Chad. Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion carry. Listening to DM talk and trying to keep who made the motion in the mind, and he come out saying. Approval of Circuit Clerk payment for October grand jury and November circuit court.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Randy?
Second.
Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of travel for deputies picking up inmates in McKinney, Texas.
Got a lot of money. Make a motion. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Randy? All in favor? Motion carry. I don't want to get ahead of you. Approval of inventory deletions from the Sheriff's Department, there's six iPhones.
I make a motion. Second.
We just did an upgrade on those. Do one last year, we do one every year, but we kept them for two. They were starting to have some malfunction, so we done an upgrade.
Okay, a motion by CJ, second by Chad, all in favor? Motion carry. Approval of travel for Gunnar Higgins to attend M D C C Law Enforcement Training Academy, December the seventh.
Make a motion.
January ninth, March twenty-fourth.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry.
We just wanted, we needed to put that on there just because we're a little low on vehicles. He may have to drive his own, so we just wanted to get it approved in case he has to drive his own vehicle and be reimbursed, just in case.
All right, we have approval of payroll authorization of Sheriff's Department. Christina Hall was a new hire for part-time dispatcher. Matthew Panel, part-time to full-time deputy. Adam Fitz, investigator. Chris Whiteside from sergeant to lieutenant. Terry Doughty from sergeant to lieutenant. Chris Swords from sergeant to lieutenant. Alex Bryant from corporal to sergeant. Tanner Golden from corporal to sergeant. Ashley Jennings from corporal to sergeant.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Sam, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry.
That should just about get us pulled up for right now, have three deputies on the shift. And of course, we had open investigator, that's why a lot of those were promotions. So when you have one of those investigator openings and just about everybody all the way down, kind of move through. Why there were so many of them?
Is I think Brian Paul, I ain't going to.
Uh it may be later. That was the Florida open.
Discuss authorizing three rivers to advertise through reverse auction. With eight thousand garbage cans, garbage carts, five automated trucks, three nothing trucks with conventional chassis. Now this is just advertising.
I make a motion. Second. Second.
Motion to CJ. Second to Randy, all in favor? Motion carries.
Terry, you have anything?
Not at all.
Jimmy, anything else? Steve?
Yes.
Mr. President, uh, this is my request to the Board and to Chancellor Clerk. I want to be on the, on the agenda of the meeting on Monday, January three, twenty twenty-two. The nature of the request will be, uh, providing, uh, much more additional information to news media as to what is covered in board meetings. Uh, this is, uh, consistent with the Sunshine Law of the State of Mississippi. I'll be making that request formally and, uh, in writing. That material I furnish to each meeting, to myself, to Mr. West, Mr. Stansel, and anybody else that covers these meetings, uh, as news people on a regular basis. But I'll make that request formally on January the third in writing and forward, and please put me on the agenda for that.
Okay. Mr. Dave got you on the agenda.
Thank you.
No more comments. Nothing else, we recess till Monday.
We got a motion?
Second. I'm just going straight up rich ass.
Motion by Randy, second to Sam, we recess Monday, December fourth. All in favor? Motion carries.